Welcome to this eighth September Waynesboro City Council meeting. Mr. Sloane, will you lead us in the place?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. If you wish to speak at the citizens' comment of any public hearings, the sign up sheets are in the back of chambers. Make sure that you sign up. Item two is adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Comby. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five zero.
Four zero.
Four zero, I'm sorry. My apologies. Habit. Mr. Mr. Short is on his way. He was running late coming from work, so he'll be here shortly. Item three is matters from the mayor. I have August twenty ninth. The vice mayor, councilman Sloane, councilman Wood. We had the opportunity to welcome the Commonwealth's lieutenant governor, Winston Earl Sears, to our city. She was here at the invite of one of the citizens. And we were allowed to have an audience with her. And so our EDA staff gave a good briefing on some of the highlights of things going on in the city and then some things to come. So thanks to Greg and Stephanie for that. We also gave her a short tour at Rosenwall Community Center, where Mr. Wilmot gave a brief history on Rosenwall. And then she was able to chat with some citizens who were there. Also, our office on youth, she chatted with those folks. And our Parks and Rec staff as well. So she made her rounds. And thanks to Dwayne and his staff as well as getting the community center set up for that. And then we did get a pitch. Delegate Campbell was with us. And so we all got a chance to pitch the museum to the lieutenant governor. So hopefully that fell on some receptive ears. So that's all I have. Matters from City Council?
I just want to recognize, you know, our Waynesboro football team. Our varsity team from the high school. Broke a twenty-four game losing streak this week. Some of y'all know, some of you don't know, I'm the P A announcer for them and I was hoarse for a day and a half afterwards. But if you were there and saw how happy those kids were, it was worth every minute of it and every bit of hoarseness. Dr. Hosted, or there's the team doctor, you know, it was, we were witness to a very happy night in Waynesboro. So we're very proud of those kids and just good to see them as celebrating at the end of a game for once. So big congratulations to all the staff and the coaches and especially the young men who got out there and gave it all right down to the last eleven seconds. So.
Nice.
Anything else? Okay. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it now five zero. Item six is consider adopting resolutions of support for three VDOT revenue sharing applications for the following transportation projects. East Main Street, streetscape, signal replacement at East Main and Delphine, and roundabout construction at Ralston Thirteenth. Ms. Tate, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. So the first resolution of support this evening is for the East Main Street Streetscape Project, which was originally approved as a two point two million dollar smart scale funded project in the twenty eighteen smart scale round. Now that we've done completion of thirty percent engineering plans, the cost estimate for the project is significantly higher and estimated at five point six million dollars. So staff is looking to fund that shortfall utilizing VDOT's revenue sharing program, where you have a fifty percent grant and fifty percent local match. With that cost increase also came the need to reduce some of the scope on the project. And so there's an area of the corridor where there's existing sidewalk. And so that would remain. And the project would pick up at Hunter Street here and transition to a shared use path that would run along the southern side of the corridor. And it would come out here at the parking lot. It's across from the old kombucha, Blue Ridge Kombucha place. And that is where the shared use path would end. So this is for a VDOT revenue sharing application for a fifty percent grant and fifty percent match. So the city's portion of that would be roughly one point seven million dollars to make that the full funding on the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah. So you said it was originally the twenty eighteen funding.
Yes.
Two point two. And then the updated cost, now that we got thirty percent engineering done, is five point six?
It's five point six million dollars, yes.
What would it have been if it wasn't a reduced scale project?
They looked at it and it was above seven million dollars. And so rather than coming to you with that request for a revenue sharing application after working with city finance staff, we were looking to have the consultant engineers reduce the scope of the project. And that removing the portion of the project that had existing sidewalk was something they felt like they could remove. And we obviously still met the connectivity intent of the project to get it down to the five point six million. But yes, it was, I don't remember the exact number, but north of seven million for the entire stretch. That would have started from east. I guess that the road that's right before Charlotte, I think it's east. And it would have gone all the way. But it would have been kind of redoing existing sidewalk and then making.
Are we still planning on doing like median, you know, medians in that area and just not redoing sidewalks?
So, so, so no, at this time, the project would start here at Hunter Street. And it would be a shared use path and landscaping. It's hard to see, but in here, there is a little bit of median work. But there was never envisioned to be any median work along this portion. I believe in the earlier portions of the project that have been reduced from the scope, there may have been some small, very small median sections. But this project was always intended to be more of a streetscape pedestrian project and less of an access management project like we're seeing with Broad Street and with the West Main Street project. Any other questions?
So the way that we've structured it this evening is we'll have Ms. Tate provide the staff review for each of the three and then we'll consider the votes subsequently in sequence.
Okay. So the next one is the East Main Street, Delphine Avenue signal replacement. We're also hoping to apply for a revenue sharing application. So in two thousand sixteen, an inspection of the signal at that intersection showed that the poles were deteriorating and needed to be replaced. And then in two thousand eighteen, there was an analysis done to look at what's the most cost efficient solution for that intersection. And at the time, it was decided to convert the intersection to a roundabout. And then as funding became available and our transportation consultants began to work through that and look at updated post COVID traffic data, recognize that the single lane roundabout would have had to have been a double lane roundabout to accommodate that increased traffic. And so at that time, it was decided that it would actually be more cost efficient to go back to a signal replacement. So the total estimated project cost is two point nine million dollars. This was a previous revenue sharing project and was awarded at one point one million dollars. And so we are requesting to make up the shortfall on that project also with a revenue sharing application. Questions on that one? Okay. The next is the Ralston Avenue and Thirteenth Street Roundabout. So that intersection was previously controlled by a wire supported signal head. And then due to the failure of the pole supporting the wiring, that light was taken out in two thousand seventeen. The intersection has since been converted to a two way stop. However, an analysis of traffic counts has warranted a signal or a roundabout that location. And it was determined that the most cost efficient solution was to convert it to a roundabout. So the engineering plans for this project are almost complete. And so based on the sixty percent plans, the total estimated project cost is nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars. And the smart scale award was for five hundred and seventy eight thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. So this revenue sharing would make up that shortfall with the city's contribution being approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Any questions on that one? So that covers all of items that are under six, the revenue sharing applications.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of support for the revenue sharing application for the East Main Street Gate project?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Comby, Vice Mayor Comby. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd love to say, you know, we've said it in our agenda, in our briefings that we've had over this stuff. And I just want to say it just kind of out loud for the record that, you know, one of the most frustrating things of sitting up here is the time between, time money is awarded to the time projects start. And that's a state thing, not a local thing. I spoke to John Good, who is our area director on the, or board member from the Commonwealth Transportation Board about just this same thing. But apparently it's a frustration every council, every board of supervisors in the state have. And I just hope everybody understands that money changes between time you get, the value changes from the time that you start the process of getting one of these projects till the time it actually shovels start to turn dirt. And it's unfortunate. And that causes a lot of frustration in the community because people don't understand why the prices change, why it takes so long. But that is definitely at a state level. And I have voiced my dissatisfaction with that on many occasions to a lot of the folks up the chain of command. So I hope everybody understands that that these are good projects. And we have to shuffle around a little bit to make them happen because of the stuff we have to deal with when it comes from the state down to us. So Leslie's done a fantastic job with this.
I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstention.
Oh, with one abstention. Sorry, Mr. Short.
Okay.
Forgot about you.
Yeah, just for the record, so as an employee of the Virginia Department of Transportation, I'll be abstaining from these motions.
So four, four, one abstention. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of support revenue sharing application for the East Main and Delphine Signal Replacement?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Comby. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. Ayes have it four zero, one abstention. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of support for the revenue sharing application for the Ralston and Thirteenth Street Roundabout Construction?
Sure move.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Abstention.
All in favor, I'm sorry. Ayes have it four zero. Item seven is to consider adopting a resolution of support for a transportation alternatives program application for the Waynesboro Transit Access Project. Ms. Tate?
So this is a resolution of support for the Waynesboro Transit Access Project. And this would be utilizing the transportation alternatives program, which is an eighty percent grant, twenty percent locality match program. And this project would be to upgrade five existing bus stops within the city. And it would include the Walmart Market Bus Stop. You can see here in this instance, the need for kind of a retaining wall here at that location and then a bus pad and bus shelter. The next stop would be what we're calling the Mountain View Apartment Stop. So it would be a pedestrian crossing, a bus pad here. And then you can see the upgraded curb ramps and some kind of small sidewalk sections for that location. The next is what we're calling the DMV stop, DMV Food Lion Stop off of King Avenue. Again, a bus shelter and bus pad and upgraded ADA curb ramps and pedestrian crossing. The fourth would be a bus pad and shelter and a small ADA curb ramp upgrade here at the Speedway Gas Station. And then the last one would be some, a small area of proposed right of way and bus shelter here at the Kroger. This project is estimated to be a total project cost of one point three million dollars. And it would be an eighty percent grant to a twenty percent match application to upgrade those stops. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the city's tap application for the Transit Access Project?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sloane. Any discussion?
I'll just say, just for the record, as an employee of VDOT, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Short. All in favor, say aye.
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 Have it four zero, one abstention. Item eight is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city and CAPSOL. Mr. Ham?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, in two thousand nine, the community agent, excuse me, the Community Action Partnership of Stanton Augusta and Waynesboro, or CAPSOL as it's commonly known, was designated by the governor of Virginia as a community action agency to serve the residents of Stanton Augusta County and Waynesboro. CAPSOL was likewise designated by the governing bodies of those member localities through a memorandum of agreement. CAPSOL administers funds made available through the federal community services block grant, the state community services block grant, the federal temporary assistance to needy families program. Required matching funds are provided by those member localities, including Stanton Augusta County and Waynesboro. CAPSOL is governed by a board comprised of local elected officials or their representatives, elected representatives of the indigent population of the region and representatives of the business, civic, and religious organizations in the community. The original two thousand sixteen M O U, or memorandum of agreement, remains in effect and reflects organizational and operational elements that are no longer applicable or preferable to maintain. Accordingly, a revised M O A has been developed and is attached for the elected body's consideration. And the M O A is being considered by each of the individual members as well, including Stanton Augusta County. Revisions to the M O A can be simply summarized as follows. It clarifies the role of CAPSOL Board in supervision of staff and contract positions, outlines the city of Waynesboro Finance Department as the fiscal agent functions, updated board terms to match current state code and removes the old code sections. And then finally, I think there are a couple of other sections that reflect code updates and signatories to reflect current locality staffing. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, we ask that you approve the M O A this evening.
Any question? Is there a motion to approve the M O U in authorized execution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Comby. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it five zero. Item nine is to receive a presentation of the comp plan phase one public engagement report. Ms. Tate?
So this evening, and included in your packets was a long, a lengthy phase one public engagement report. And so the first of one of those reports that our consultant has provided to us at this time to really highlight what has occurred so far in our comprehensive plan process and what we've heard from the community. So in order to keep this brief and not go through all of those sixty some pages, I'm going to really just kind of provide a summary of where, what we've been doing, the different touches that we've had with the community to this point and kind of maybe point out some areas within the engagement report that you might want to look and citizens can look to kind of see how ideas and thoughts are beginning to come together as it relates to that public engagement. And then we're going to also towards the end just cover some next steps. So you all and also the public are aware of some other opportunities that you have throughout this two year process to have your voice heard and be a part of the plan. So just some process updates. The council has appointed members as a steering committee that are helping to guide decision making in this process. We have launched several public engagement opportunities. This phase one public engagement report does include some of the initial results of that. And then, like I said, we will be discussing some next steps of the process. So we do have a survey out right now, a social pinpoint survey and kind of a more traditional questionnaire survey. We have placed flyers and we have pamphlets. We've had some kind of yard signs made that we've put along the parks and along the greenway so that individuals know that the survey's out there. We've done some press releases and our consultants are able to track kind of the traffic to the survey and see what we're doing that's working and maybe what we could be doing better to get the word out at this point. So a little bit about the steering committee and the different things that they have done. So we have branded the plan, so it's called Waynesboro Together. And it was really the steering committee at their first meeting that was kind of brainstorming. What are some possible names for the comp plan? And then when we had our public open house kickoff meeting, the public overwhelmingly selected the Waynesboro Together branding. And then in August, the committee reviewed several different logos, nine different iterations of logos, and selected this logo here that we'll be using for the plan. For stakeholder groups, we have convened eleven different stakeholders, topic areas, and held our first meetings with each of those groups. And so those were an hour and a half to two hour long meetings. And the steering committee was able to review who all was on those stakeholder group rosters, add some names and ensure that we're really making sure that all the essential organization and invoices are included in the process. And then the steering committee identified engagement goals that they wanted to complete. So through an online questionnaire, the steering committee created a list of engagement goals. And then at their first meeting, they approved our engagement plan for the process. So that's really helpful as you're going through a two year process. It helps you not get off track in anything you're thinking about doing. You can kind of bring it back to that engagement plan. Are we meeting the goals that we set out for at the beginning of the process? So the public engagement at this point is through the surveys. We've held an open house meeting. We've held eleven different stakeholder meetings. And we're continuing to interact with the public and want to keep that message out there and clear that this is an ongoing process and that it's not a one and done type survey. And that they'll continue to see touch points throughout the process where they can participate. So some of the communications, we have these little comment cards that we have printed, brochures, the yard signs, the Q R codes have the yard signs. Our consultants are also working on getting coasters printed with the Q R code that we could take around to different restaurants and businesses in the, coming up in the fall. Staff and hopefully some members of the steering committee will be attending what we're calling public intercepts. So being out there at traditional kind of community events so that people aren't having to come to a meeting or fill out a survey, but can maybe just talk to us there at some of those events. So we plan to do the Chili Brews and Blues Festival, hopefully catch a farmer's market, the Wine Over Waynesboro, the Fall Foliage Festival. So those are some that we're hoping to be at to staff and have these comment cards available that people can fill out. As you all are aware, on June eighteenth, we held an open house at the high school and we had over eighty-five people attend. The purpose of that meeting was really to hear from the public. What are some of the strengths that you see across various categories within the city? And then what are some of the challenges you see? There were probably twelve different boards set up that were really trying to get feedback on kind of general goals, where people lived or worked within the community to make sure we were getting a good representation. There was also a visual preference type survey of several different housing types, commercial development, industrial development, that people could kind of engage with about what aesthetically they liked in those different developments. And so all of this information and all of those sticky notes that you see is starting to be summarized in that sixty-five page public engagement report that begins to kind of tell the story. So at this point, we have three hundred and forty-two responses on our standard survey. And our goal is to get at least a thousand, so we need to continue to push that out. There's also a social pinpoint map where citizens can place a pin to represent an area that they like, an area that could use some sprucing up, that there's an opportunity there, that there's some kind of challenge there. So we've had seventy-five different individuals contribute to that pinpoint map with three hundred and forty-seven comments on the map. And so staff continues to push that survey and we'll do that at these various public events that are upcoming. So for the stakeholder groups, those are the different categories of groups. So we convened a housing stakeholder group, a transportation, economy, infrastructure, education, health, public safety, environment, history and culture, recreation and outdoors, and then a group designated for reaching underrepresented groups. And so we've had the first of the meetings with each of those groups. And we'll continue to engage those groups throughout the process as we begin to distill down a vision and goals and other more distinct components of the plan. So for the initial results, I obviously would point you to the engagement report. It is a very long report. It's not something I can go into detail here this evening. You'll note that there are some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that have been distilled kind of from those various stakeholder meetings and listed in the plan. And then back to what I was speaking about, about the visual preference survey on page twenty-eight of the report, you can find preferred development types. And you can kind of really see through circular graphs, kind of like a circular bar graph, what are those different visual preferences? And they're always interesting to see what people gravitate more towards. more towards, so I would point you to those within that report. So, for next steps, the steering committee does plan to meet in October, and we're going to begin to start the process of goal development, and start reviewing the future land use map. At that time, we also plan to have some data reports, so the city's consultants are working on these various data reports for each of the chapter topics that were discussed, so each of those stakeholder group topics will kind of have data that represents those different topics. And so, this is something that is kind of representative of that data report, that our consultants are able to look at kind of the value per acre of the various different land uses, and that kind of helps us look at areas that might be more prime for redevelopment, and kind of help guide that discussion with the steering committee on the future land use map. So, that's something that we see moving into October with the steering committee. So, we do plan to close this initial survey this fall, and begin to analyze those results. As I mentioned, we're working on getting coasters printed, that will have the QR code for the surveys on it, and distribute that to local restaurants, and maybe have some of those to kind of give out at these different public intercepts. And then, those public intercepts will be having the pamphlets and the comment cards, and really start targeting those community events to really raise those numbers on the survey throughout this fall. Some other great ideas that came up in our stakeholder group meetings is, maybe we should set up a twelfth stakeholder group, and that being a youth engagement group. So, we're thinking about doing that, and working and trying to identify a group of young individuals that we could meet with as our youth stakeholder group. We also got a lot of great feedback about maybe working with our local barber shops, and possibly setting up, setting up a station at laundromats, to really kind of just get in there and be where people are naturally spending time, to get some more feedback and engagement in that way. And then, later this year, the stakeholders are going to begin to reconvene, and that's when we're going to be kind of distilling down the goals for the plan. So, that's kind of the first Phase One Public Engagement Report. I know it was a lot of information that you received in your packet. It is pretty visual-heavy, and hope that it provides, you know, an aesthetic way of getting the information to you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have now, and then certainly if you think of anything in the coming days, please feel free to reach out to me.
I have a question. Regarding the survey, I went out to the website, and I just checked it again, and maybe you have more than one survey, but this survey says it expires July 31st. And so, I was going to take the survey, but I said, oh, it's expired, so let me, let me not. So, if it's still...
Yeah, it's still open, so I'll make sure, maybe it was like a leftover note that they had put in from a previous time, but thanks for letting me know that. I'll make sure we remove it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, and I did want to mention that we have some paper copies of the survey that I believe have been dropped off at the library. We do have paper copies also at our offices, and then are hoping to set up maybe a box here at this building, where individuals could grab a paper copy and then drop it off. So, we're hoping to get those set up, but if anybody would like a paper copy, they can always reach out to our office, the Community Development Office, or go by the library, there are printed copies there.
Where are you located?
We're at 230 South Wayne.
230?
South Wayne.
South Wayne. Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I know where you're located, but I just...
Sure, I understand. I understand.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Leslie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lots of good work going on with that, lots of hard work by the staff, Leslie's staff in getting this thing off the ground. Item 10 is to consider updating the unplanned and unfunded section of the city's capital improvement plan. Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. Item 10 this evening is a companion item to number seven. Part of the grading criteria for the transportation alternative application is that the project appears in the city's capital, or in a capital plan somewhere for the city. The capital plan, when it was adopted in 2025, did not include this item in the unplanned unfunded section, so staff would recommend updating that section to add this project as the funding for that, for this project becomes more clear, we'll get it into an actual year, put the funding aside, assigned to it. I did make one other update to the plan, and this is kind of a good example of how things come on and off of this. In 2025, when the unplanned unfunded section was conceived, we didn't have the money for the basic park bathroom grant. That money was awarded, and so we ultimately moved that project into 2025 because grant funds were received, so I went ahead and removed that from the listing, so it wouldn't be confusing, added this one on, and then any projects, items come on and off of the unplanned unfunded, either through staff looking at it, conceiving of a project, council looking at it, saying they want to pull it into a future year, or receiving additional outside funding. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Is there a motion to update the unplanned unfunded portion of the city's CIP?
I make the motion that we update the unplanned unfunded portion of the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item 11 is to consider adopting a resolution in support of a federal emergency mitigation grant application. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. In February of 2025, city council adopted a resolution supporting staff's application to the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities grant funding. Those funds were ultimately not awarded, however, VDM did work with us to find another grant opportunity, which is the one presented to you here. So, it's pretty much the same application, it has a local match of two hundred and eleven thousand, total project of four million two thirty. It's worth noting, we're exploring a couple of different funding options for this item. In total, it's about an eight million dollar project, and we're looking at the four million dollars for the pump station from a grant, or if that doesn't come through, we're in contact with the state on a loan program that has loan forgiveness, and if that doesn't come through, we'll ultimately have to finance the project, because it's a project that has to be done for your water infrastructure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution supporting the federal emergency mitigation grant?
Submoved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item 12 is citizen comment. Mr. Hamp?
No one has signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you. Item thirteen, communications correspondence calendar.
I have two items for the council, and for the public generally. We're winding down a rather active event season for our community, and we have two big downtown events that will have street closures approaching this weekend, or this coming weekend. Saturday, September 13th, is the Chili Brews and Blues Festival. Road closures for that involve Loomos Lane, and they will occur beginning around noon on Friday, and wrap up around noon on Sunday. And then, a reminder that the art show is the weekend of October 11 and 12. Road closures will start around three o'clock on October 10th, and wrap up around Sunday in the evening around five or six, probably. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamp. Item fourteen is a closed session, request by the city manager and city attorney. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into a closed meeting in order to consult with the city attorney and be briefed by staff members about litigation regarding Oatman Land Company, which such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating or litigating posture as authorized by section 2.2-37118 and 7 of the Virginia Code.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Woodrow?
Mary Lee?
Aye.
Vice President Comby?
Aye.
Senator Short?
Aye.
Senator Wood?
Aye.
We're in closed session.[1196.83]